Okay, it's 6:01 on February 21st. I will call the general board meeting to order at this time. Roll call please.
Mr. Fleck.
Here.
Mr. Guerin. Mr. Gentry. Mr. Quagliano. Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Okay, we barely have a quorum, and with that, I think I'll make a motion at 6:02 to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Second from Ms. Melendi. Roll call please.
Mr. Gentry. Mr. Guerin. Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano. Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Yes, we are in closed session.
In here, if you want to bring down with you. Alright, but I don't want to see you guys in the glow. It's like the, the glow. That's the bar that's in the hotel and it's, well, you might not be in that.
Oh, really?
It's in the bar.
Oh, wow.
Look at that grin.
Or is this place called the glow?
Look at that grin. It's called the glow, but it's in, it's in the hotel. Because I was... I'm excited to have it or never. It's very, it's a very...
I didn't know if we did it on western, if you were interested in western, if you're actually talking about...
Where, where that's... Um, well, I, I think, I think, yeah, I think, um, you know, we're all... You hope they... Hopefully, 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 it's... And I'm not trying to... Yeah, and I'm not, of course, you know, a lot of times... Or say, or something else that I... You know, no, that's why we have...
Oh, from our... Ah.
Yeah.
Um. So they were doing up in there starting at seven o'clock. Uh, more. Some stuff. Yeah, so we started. Right here. So, lots of people up here. So yeah, so there's a form to fill out. And as you can see from the agenda. And so then we can bring that up.
Okay.
I was good, you know, but uh...
I moved this up here so I don't have to roll over your straps.
No, no, just my hand, I just didn't want to roll over your straps.
Is Bill going for yourself a seat?
Oh, he is. He thinks I'm a big deal and I don't argue.
I found like this huge like flag and it's this big and why would a girl with an alley with him, it doesn't sound of a big deal. But she's really small. She loves it.
We are ready.
Okay, it's seven oh three. We are out of closed session. We have no actions to take, but let's have roll call, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
Mr. Garen?
Here.
Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mr. Jantry?
Here.
Okay, with that, let's have the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Fanetico?
Thank you for having us back. We brought quite the group of cheerleaders with us tonight. If the cheerleaders could come join us. Normally, we would have our students introduce themselves prior to the pledge. However, during the next agenda item, Ms. Lombard and I are going to introduce the coach and the girls' part of the recognition. So, we're going to just go right into the pledge first.
Pledge of allegiance, unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Okay. Let's, well, let's move on to the next item, which is student recognition. So, please, continue.
So, as I, as I said, we're very excited that the Marlo cheerleaders took third in state this year with their coaches, Mrs. Schmull and Mrs. Ruffalo. So, I'd like to introduce one of our coaches, Mrs. Ruffalo.
Hi, everyone. I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about our special team over here. From the beginning of our season, we knew this was a special group. They were so dedicated to succeed and made sure they did everything they could to reach their goal of top half at state. Throughout the season, they made changes themselves to our routine and perfected it tirelessly throughout extra practices, through study hall, at home, texting, getting together, outside of school. So, we, Mrs. Schmull and I, just could not be more proud of what they've achieved. They deserve all of this recognition. They are amazing. I'm going to let them come up and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Hannah Gajewski.
I'm Kendall Rayvic.
I'm Amber Kowalski.
I'm Mason Hewitt.
I'm Sophie Thompson.
I'm Lena Weber.
I'm Addison Sees.
I'm Lindsay Simmons.
I'm Ashley Zolan.
I'm Ella Oshewski.
I'm Sophie Zion.
I'm Riley Omara.
I'm Summer Pyro.
I'm Amanda Atman.
Yeah, it is.
Good job, guys. All your neighbors.
All right, okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and we do have quite a few. I want to remind everybody that the public comment is per policy two dash two thirty. We limit public comments to three minutes. We do have quite a few on the same topic, and I ask, just in the interest of time, we do want you to be able to have your public comment. But if there's the same information coming for each speaker, I ask that you try and focus on something new that you really want to say and get out in public comment. So with that being said, I will call these in the order that they were received. First one is Sandra Van Buren. When you come up, just make sure that the green light is on so that the people that are online can hear you.
Hello, I'm here to talk about Maria Vallejo. My daughter Samantha is in her class this year. I know when I walked into that classroom the first time to meet her, I saw a young teacher with some purple hair and telling me about her theory on homework. I have to tell you, I was a little bit nervous. Within a week, my daughter is coming home wanting to read all of the time. She has excelled in math. She's excelled in reading. She has a life, I feel like this is the first time that she's really lit up in a school environment. Maria has been instrumental to that. I think that by not renewing her contract, you're not only doing a disservice to future learners, but to the, to the ones that have already engaged with her and being able to reward hard work and just a love for children. I know that my daughter's test scores have skyrocketed through the roof, not only with regular testing, but with the standardized testing. And I'm not really sure what the evaluation or what the decision was based on, but I'd really appreciate if you could reevaluate some of that. I think you'd be doing our community a disservice by not renewing her contract.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is Leila Schnell. Okay, before, before you do, can you fill out a form if you're, so that we have that for the record? Thank you. I'm sorry? Yeah, why don't we do that? Okay. Very good. Lauren Cardenell? There you go.
Ms. Vallejo is probably the best teacher I've ever had in my life. She invested so much time, money slash energy into making that classroom the best it could be for her students to be able to learn. The books that she spends her own money on is incredible. I could tell anything to Ms. Vallejo, and that's pretty amazing because I normally have never had that connection with a teacher. She benefits the whole school and she does not deserve to go. She has a unique type of teaching and I really enjoyed it. I improved my reading and math so much from Ms. Vallejo. During the summer, she would still stay in touch, and about once a month, she would go outside by Daggy Park and let us sit and read with her. Most of the kids went because they enjoyed having Ms. Vallejo as a teacher. She goes out of her way to make us learn the best she can.
Thank you. And if I, if I butcher your name, I apologize in advance. Melissa Aravalo? Okay. There's more names. I'll have other chances to ask them up.
How many folks are here today for Ms. Vallejo? Every single one? So about two weeks ago, we found out that Mrs. Vallejo, her contract's not being renewed. I understand she'll be up four years next year, this coming year, so I don't know if that was due to tenure or why the reason was. But we come together today out of our busy lives to ask for you guys to reconsider Ms. Vallejo. What you'll find is a hundred and fifty-five people signed this petition. She's probably taught about a hundred students in her time here. Getting these signatures in the last ten days was probably the easiest thing I ever had to do in my life. People just came flooding with hearts open to want to help Ms. Vallejo. If you read what these kids and teachers or people who wrote, chose to write the signatures, they talk about how their child was impacted. The word impacted was used eleven times. How she inspired kids to open their hearts, to learn to read, but not because they felt like they had to, but because they were inspired and wanted to learn by her style. It's on your website, Mr. Rowe, that when you took over this job, the superintendent, that you wanted to make this school a destination school. And Ms. Vallejo is carrying the exact kind of goals and values. She should be here, and we as a community should have the right to say we want to, we do not want to let go of this great teacher. So we're asking you to gather, unify. Please reconsider keeping her. She means a lot to the families and the kids.
Thank you. Eric Farr.
Thank you for letting me speak. I echo everything everybody else has said. I'd like to add, my wife and I moved here in two thousand sixteen from DuPage. We had a good school system down there. We did see a lot of poor teachers down there. Mrs. Vallejo is not a poor teacher. She's a great teacher. The school district here is what was our final decision maker to come to Huntley. She's impacted my daughter in a positive way. So just if you could reconsider, she's a great asset.
Thank you. Jamie Ling?
I wish my grandmother was here to speak on my behalf. I'm just going to say that right now. I'm a little nervous as well. Just quickly, I mean, everything everyone said, I'm trying not to mirror it, but I'm looking at our mission statement for our school district. Our learning community will inspire, challenge, and empower all students always. Mrs. Vallejo does all of those things and more for my child. We're new to the district this year. We were terrified to move. Three kids, three new schools, new nervous mom. Mrs. Vallejo reached out to us personally within the first week or so to welcome us and make sure that we were okay, see how my daughter was doing, send me encouraging emails about how she was doing throughout the day so I wasn't worrying about my child. As a parent, that's, that's above and beyond something that a normal teacher, I think, would do. The next page quickly. Goal three in your long-range goals: attract, develop, and retain the best and brightest staff. Mrs. Vallejo is the best and the brightest that we have ever seen in any of my children's history, and we've had some amazing teachers. So I encourage you, please reconsider. We implore you. It's, it's necessary for our children and for the parents here to have teachers like this that will change our children and want to read and want to do math and want to go to school. That's what we need desperately. As everyone said, it would be a huge disservice to let this lady go, so please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Myra Sai?
Hello, I don't really have much to say because I agree with all the parents that they talked about. Mrs. Vallejo, she's an amazing teacher. I have a fourth grader. He's kind of a shy boy, but for some reason, Mrs. Vallejo did something with him. He's more of a quiet guy, but Mrs. Vallejo reached out to him, and now he's, he's, he's doing very good at school, always on the top. I'm not bragging about my son, but his grades and everything are always on a high level. This is our fourth year here, and again, just like the gentleman said, I came from Los Angeles and school, good schools, it's kind of hard to find. And I find Huntley School District is very good, and I'm kind of sad to, you know, like to know that Mrs. Vallejo is going to be let go. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Chris Santa Marlowe? Did I say that right?
It does kind of look like you know.
It's, okay. Santa Marco. Okay, my apologies.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How we doing? Oh, I bet. I'm going to start by reading a statement by myself. I'm also speaking on behalf of my son because he's not a big fan of doing the whole group thing. So it'll be a quick letter. I understand my time is three minutes. They say educators are the builders of the future, molding young minds with knowledge while providing an avenue for exploration, self-discovery, confidence, and the ability to fail and learn how to overcome that failure. That's exactly what you have in Mrs. Vallejo. While I know decisions are more than likely final, I implore you to rethink your decision. What this educator taught my son, along with many other sons and daughters as well, is respect. Not only to respect others, but to respect yourself. Also confidence, confidence to make your own decisions and to make mistakes, but not allow those mistakes to define you. The Martin mission statement is that you're committed to maintaining a safe, nurturing learning environment that encourages high expectations, growth of character and achievement, while inspiring children to become lifelong learners and productive citizens. I suggest you heed that statement and not allow it to become a catchphrase. Thank you. And then this is from my son. Mrs. Vallejo is a caring teacher all around. She is a very respectful person and deserves to stay teaching because she thinks of others, her students, and not just herself. I was in her second year of teaching class, and she did an amazing job for only her second year of teaching. When I was in fifth grade, every week I would go to her class to see her because of how nice she was. My final reason why she should continue teaching is because she inspired me to keep going and never stop, as well as every class she has ever had. I hope she can continue teaching.
Thank you. Okay, and then the proxy for Leila Schnell, are you ready? Oh, okay.
Hi, uh, okay. So I was just, wanted to say that all Ms. Vallejo wants to do is to inspire people, to inspire her students to just keep going and wanting to just learn and continue, just wanting to read and do math and explore technology. All she wants to do is, um, she just wants to teach kids and she always wants to inspire kids to keep going. And she really likes teaching and she...
Take your time.
Though, the one thing that, Leila was a student of Mrs. Vallejo's, and they recently, just very recently, had to move out, move out of district. And her parents struggled with it because they wanted to be in the Huntley School District. The teachers here were what, was their purpose to be here. And my daughter, Leila's mother, struggles every day with, did she make the right choice? Mrs. Vallejo was instrumental in Leila's education. Leila didn't like to read. All Leila wanted to do was sports. But Mrs. Vallejo molded her, as well as all the other students in her class. They all wanted to read. Leila reads more books in a week than I've done in six years. She, she brought herself to a level that the children could all understand and interact with. Leila talks about the fact that she went to nerd camp. She's like, what other teacher goes to nerd camp, Grandma? You know, the technology. She would spend her own funds on technology to teach the children. I'm a little out of my school years, but I can tell you, I can count on less than a hand the good teachers I had in my entire life. I know them by name. I will remember them to the day I die. Mrs. Vallejo will be part of all of her students' history, whether she's retained or not. But like the rest have done, I would urge you to maintain her because she is what this district needs and should raise its skill level too. She should be your norm. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, first of all, I want to thank all of you for taking the time to prepare your remarks, to come here, to speak on the topic, especially the students. Very, very impressed with the words you put together. Even if your dad read them for you, those were great. So I know it takes a lot of courage to be here. The board takes these, those public comment very seriously. We, we care about community involvement. We want to hear from our, our stakeholders, which is the parents, the students, the taxpayers, just the, the members of the community. So this does matter to us, and I do appreciate what we heard today. So we'll take it under advisement, and, and this is something that will be dealt with according to the procedure, but thank you very much. Okay? Okay, moving on. Revision and adoption of the agenda, item number seven. Let me go through this. Do we have a report from Ms. Lombard? No report? Okay. Thanks, thank you all for coming. Dr. Schlifter? Mr. Altmeyer? Okay. Mr. Zare?
No.
Dr. Bzinski? It looks like we have something under Community Relations, so I'll keep that, Mr. Armstrong. Looks like we have a superintendent's report. I have a president's report. So with that, I would like to make a motion to revise and adopt the agenda with the removal of items eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Troy. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, the motion carries, so the agenda is adopted. So we now move on to Mr. Armstrong, Community Relations.
You have the FOIA report. I'll be happy to take any questions on that.
Questions or comments on that?
Yeah, I have a question. There's a rather big blurb here about a ton of information that's been requested, including video footage. How do we transmit or transpose or send that video information out? That seems like a volume of stuff. I imagine that's not something that's sent over the air. over the internet.
Dr. Bzinski, do you want to speak to that? It's mostly his staff who works diligently to retrieve these, the footage requested.
Sure. Generally speaking, you would be absolutely correct. It's an absolute ton of, of data that's sent. To give you, in terms of numbers, in technology speak, the most recent requests were between 650 gigabytes of data and a terabyte of data. So these are huge amounts of data that literally take up entire hard drives, specifically purchased just to store this data to send out.
It's not, it's not thumb drive?
No, no, these are very much spinning disk, full hard drives, external hard drives like you would use on a home computer for storing massive amounts of pictures and videos and things like that on a personal level. Generally speaking, each of these requests requires usually at least half of a four-terabyte drive, sometimes more.
Okay.
And we have recently started putting this data out on the internet to be shared rather than on drives. We're trying that out as a method to, to reduce the district's costs, so that we're not having to purchase hard drives for each of these requests.
How, how much is a hard drive?
Each of these, each of these hard drives cost is about $105. And we've probably, this year I would say we've gone through four, last year was, I would say double that. So...
So it's over $1,200 in hard drives that we're purchasing?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. This most recent request that we got, I want to say just less than a week ago, was transmitted and shared via the internet.
Okay.
For the first time.
Okay.
So we, we have come up with a method that, that we can put the data out in a, in a storage facility.
Right.
Share that way, rather than buying the drives.
Okay. I don't know, do we have a recourse for getting those back? I mean, I don't, I, I might be getting too much into the minutia here, but it's...
Yeah, we're in the legal minutia here, I'll speak.
$1,200 worth of taxpayer money that, that's just kind of going into a black hole and not coming back.
Yeah.
It's one thing if it's paper for pennies, but this is clearly not pennies.
Yeah, you're, you're correct on this. This is an area where the FOIA law is written is pretty out of date in terms of the, the section on fees and what you can charge for data. It's, the, the law is written, speaking about paper pages and PDF documents, it's not written in a way that covers four terabytes worth of data. And then there, with this particular request, we've had some back and forth in terms of what obligations we have under the law to provide access to these records and what fees we reasonably could charge, and that, that's something that we've had legal counsel involved in, in the past to provide an opinion on that, and I could give you a very detailed report on that if you wish, but in the interest of time, we probably don't want to get into that.
I'm, I'm fine with providing information, but obviously, there becomes a cost to the district, and, and in this case, it's rather substantial.
Yes, just in terms of hardware, it's a substantial cost, and that's not including the substantial staff time that Dr. Bzinski's staff primarily puts in, as well as Mr. Rinkosik, because there's always a component to these requests for a lot of documentation as well outside of the video. So it, it is, it is very costly.
Okay. Thanks for the added info, both of you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you for the report. On to superintendent's report, Dr. Rowe.
Okay, we are pleased to accept a donation from Mr. Hall, who donated about seven cases worth of Purell hand sanitizer and surface cleaner. We've checked them and verified an expiration date and that they were school appropriate, and have sent them out to the buildings, and as I was, was a member of buildings today, the secretaries reported how popular they've been, how appreciative everyone was for, for that donation. Great time of year as the flu was picking up, hopefully we prevented a few cases and kept some students in school, staffers in school, so we're appreciative of that donation.
All right. We'll move on to president's report. I just, I wanted to follow up on a couple of things. The last meeting, there was questions about Senate Bill 28, which is what we're calling the Clock Hours Bill. And I understand that this, I heard today from Ms. Melendi that it's on its third reading, but there seems to be negotiation going on to make some modifications to that bill. I know that the state, the Illinois Association of School Boards is opposed to that particular bill in its current form. I sent a, an email to the bill sponsor on February 9th, who happens to also be the Chair of the Education Committee. I have not gotten a response to that email at all. So I do think it's going to impact a lot of the great programs that we have here if the bill gets passed in any form close to what it is right now. So we are monitoring it, we are trying to have our voice be heard, and that's the status of that. We also had, the governor gave his budget address. When was that? Two days? Yesterday, it was yesterday, I felt like two days ago already, so. And there's a lot of, while there's a lot of great ideas out there, I'm not sure how we're going to pay for it, but there seems to be a lot of money made available for public education. So, of course, it's, it's just, now it's offered to the Assembly and they figure out how to make it happen, so. Do you have any insight, Ms. Melendi, that you can...
No, I, I don't know how they're going to pay for that, but I, I was happy to see that there was an increase in the evidence-based funding model, and also for early childhood and early intervention, which I think is going to help us as well. So that was not in the budget in the last four years, or an additional line item in the budget, so I think that's a positive, but we'll see if we can afford it.
All right, very good. Okay, that's the end of my report. Item 17 is the consent agenda. Are there any items listed that need to be pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, there being none, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second from Ms. Melendi, any discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right. Item 18, we've got some action items, so let's go through these. We've got the supplemental purchase orders, supplemental accounts payable. Mr. Altmeyer, do you have anything that we need to know about this, other than what you've been presenting?
No.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item 18.1, the supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable as presented.
Agreed.
Secretary, Mr. Quagliano, roll call.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And now we're on to 18-2, the fiscal year 20 budget draft one, Mr. Altmeyer.
Thank you very much. I am super excited to present the first draft of the fiscal year 20 budget, as well as the five-year plan, and I'm excited for various reasons. And before I get into it, I, I do want to start with, you know, I've been doing the budget for now 10 years, and this is probably the first year that draft one of the budget I'm feeling pretty good about. I know we still have a lot of issues down at the state, but when I go through the budget, I think you'll, you'll kind of see why I feel pretty good about it. We did have to make some adjustments to present the board a balanced budget at this time for draft one, which, which I'll also touch upon, but we have never been in such a situation where 91% of the revenues, for instance, I feel pretty good about. That's property taxes, and that's the state revenues. Now, there is some unknown on the state revenues, but with the evidence-based formula being passed by the state, we're a little more known than we have been in prior years, and that's 30% of our revenue, so we'll also touch upon that. So I feel pretty good about this first draft of the budget and subsequent, the forecast years of the five-year plan. What I'm going to be presenting today at a very high level, because this is draft one of the budget, I'll talk about the assumptions within the fiscal year 20 budget, as well as the forecast years, and then we'll get into the operating, the five-year operating plan results, and we'll touch upon that. But please know, this is, you know, we're going to present the budget and the five-year plan four times, at least four times throughout the year. This is an eight or nine-month process. By the middle of September, we'll pass the final budget, but each, at each one of these drafts, we will present a new five-year plan with a different scenario. So as we've done in prior years, we have the scenario most, most approximating today's economy, right? That's the best guess estimate as to what we know today. I'll also present you a five-year plan with, well, what is the best-case scenario, and a five-year plan with the worst-case scenario. At the end of the day, you will see the most approximating today's economy today for the five-year plan, and you'll also see it again when I present the final budget in September. So that'll kind of give you a quick timeline. Let's just jump into the, to the revenue assumptions for the fiscal year 20, next year's budget. CPI is already locked and loaded, so levy year 2018, we just passed levy 2018, and the CPI was 2.1%. So half of that levy will be part of the fiscal year 20 budget. We now know CPI for 2019 levy, which just happened this past December, at 1.9%, so that has also been baked into this fiscal year 20 budget. All-out years for the five-year plan, we have CPI at 2%, which is, I feel like, a pretty good estimate considering, well, the last three years have been approximately three, 2%. All right, state funding reflects the new evidence-based model, and with the hold harmless and the evidence-based model assumptions that the state will continue to set aside $350 million, since we're at 67% adequacy, and we're not going to, we're not going to move off of that mark for several years, we are estimating an additional $675,000 per year for state funding. I also feel pretty good about that with Pritzker in office, but again, the state has to make it work with the numbers. So hopefully, the educational budget will come through. And state categorical funding remains relatively flat with FY '19 and throughout the forecast years as well. Obviously, that will fluctuate as we go on. But having said that, on the revenue side, I feel really good about 91% of the overall revenues for fiscal year 20, and maybe beyond. On the expenditure side, 76% of our expenditures are salaries and benefits. So I feel pretty good about 76% of our budget for next year. Why? Well, we're following collective bargaining agreements, and we set aside an additional $450,000 in this budget for the additional needs as presented two weeks ago with the Tier One request by administration. Okay? On the health insurance side, for fiscal year 19, the current year we're in, we budgeted a 3.5% increase in health insurance. The budget that you have in front of you for next year for fiscal year 20 is setting aside increasing that budget line item by 5%. In the out years and the forecast years, we increased that 5% to 7% to give us a little more cushion, because we're not sure what is going to happen in the health and, health insurance industry. So that cover us, covers us for about 76% of those expenses. So now let's just talk about the, the overall budget. The overall budget for fiscal year 20 shows an operating surplus of $53,000. Operating revenues are increasing $3 million, primarily driven by the increase of levy dollars of $2.3 million, and the increase of state revenues that I mentioned of $675,000. Operating expenditures are budgeted to increase 3.2 million versus the FY '19 budget, driven by the increase in salaries and benefits, and offset by reductions in the capital outlay of $500,000, which I'll touch upon here in a second. Salaries are increasing by the amount of $450,000 for the new salaries we talked about, the Tier One spending. The HEA/HESP non-union salary increases reflect a $2.4 million increase. Benefits are increasing $700,000 primarily due to the health insurance increase of about $456,000, and that's the 5% increase, as well as approximately $244,000 increase in TRS and payroll taxes, FICA if you will. That results in the operating surplus of $52.9 thousand for fiscal year 20. What I do want to note is, before we got to this point, you know, we always talk about the all-needs-in of the district, right? So if you've been on the board a while, you know that normally we present you the budget, the first draft of the budget with the all-needs-in of the district, and those numbers come from the previous year's five-year plan. So after working with curriculum and working with Mr. Rinkosik with his deferred capital project plan, his maintenance plan, and working with Mr. Bzinski and other team members for technology and other team members, we determine what does the district need and want to successfully move forward. Those numbers were baked into this budget, but unfortunately, at the time, before I presented this, we were sitting at about a $1.2 million deficit. Well, as we've done in the past, we've kind of kicked the, kicked the can down the road, and so what we ended up doing for this budget, within operations and maintenance, the capital projects for Mr. Rinkosik reflected approximately a $1.3 million increase over the current year capital project amount. And so we said, well, Mr. Rinkosik, based on the projects we have, and we know that we have to get done, would the same amount work if we gave you the same amount for FY ' '19 in FY '20 as the same as FY '19? And so that's what we ended up doing to make this budget work. So although it's not the all-needs-in of the district, it does reflect the all-needs-in because of the current projects on, on the docket for next year as presented by Doug.
Was that two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago as well. So they are now tied together. Again, feel really good about that. If you look at the overall memo, the five-year plan, there is a chart that outlines the forecast years of 2021, 22, and 23, and remember, these do reflect the all-needs-in of the district. So we have operating surpluses ranging from $605,000 deficit, excuse me, we have operating deficits from $605,000 in fiscal year 23 to a 2.2, to a $2.3 million deficit in fiscal year 2021, that's next year. Now although these deficits appear very material, again, they do not reflect budget cuts, they do not reflect potential increases in revenue, they don't reflect a lot of things. And at the end of the day, I'm not really materially concerned, because I know, for instance, there's a $1.8 million spike in the capital projects line item alone for fiscal year 2021 versus 2020, based on, again, the forecasted need. Now, a lot of those needs are chiller replacements, some big-ticket items that if we have certain equipment that doesn't fail, we're not going to need to replace it. The major, major repairs of the district, primarily roof repairs, fortunately, have almost all been done, with the exception of the high school. So a lot of this is asphalt replacement, carpeting replacement, things that frankly, we could probably get by with for one to five years down the road. We don't necessarily need to replace all of those items next year. So I feel pretty good about fiscal year 21, 22, and 23, based on the fact that we can, we can move expenses, and they don't reflect additional monies coming in potentially from the state of Illinois as well. So I feel pretty good about that. That is the five-year plan, as well as the fiscal year 20 budget. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, to give you a little more detail. And with that, administration makes a recommendation for you to approve draft one of the budget.
Any questions?
Lot of information there.
So, I have not looked at the detail regarding utility costs. How has that been reflected?
Utility costs, actually, it's a great question in the budget cover.
I noticed...
Might be official, because there is no lottery under Block 1 of the solar panel, and it looks like the S-Rex will be coming our way, and right now, it looks like that the solar project is a go. The energy cost is, is flat with FY '19 at a million dollars. It does not reflect an approximate $100,000 savings. If, if the solar array system is, is up and running in January, you know, we might have a half-years worth of savings, which would approximate $100,000. That has not been baked into this budget yet.
Right.
Part of the reason we have four drafts of the budget... Part of the reason we have four drafts of the budget.
You still didn't know until a couple days ago, so...
Right.
I was just curious how you projected.
Okay. Yeah. So, there, there are a lot of future adjustments that need to happen. That's why we do four drafts of the budget. Uh, once we have more information coming out of the state of Illinois, we'll finalize our state grant numbers. We'll finalize our idea grant once we receive information coming out, you know, from the federal government. Um, you know, those are the big revenue line items. Um, on the expenditure side, we will look at FY '19 actuals, we'll look at legal fees, we'll look at everything and see where do we need to be, um, in FY '20. So, right now, when you look through the detail expenditures, you're going to see a lot of line items that are flat with FY '19. You won't see those changes till the next two drafts, and they won't be final until the September, um, the September report.
Anything else?
So, I, we've heard a, a couple times tonight, a little bit of a line here and there about the skepticism about if the state can afford it, and that, that's one of my concerns going forward in the out years about, uh, today, the, the state can do this, but I have a healthy skepticism about affordability as well. Um, did you say that you baked that into the long-term as well? Is the what-if things go south? Or are you basing it on current?
No, no. What is currently in the five-year plan is revenues increasing by approximately $675,000 a year throughout the forecast years, including next year.
From the state's side?
From the state's side.
Okay.
And that's because of the evidence-based formula, because we're a Tier 2 district, and with the hold harmless, we should never go back.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
We should only hopefully improve our revenue position year to year based on additional dollars set aside within the overall state budgeting process.
Right. That's only a 2% increase a year.
Right. Yeah. The hope is, right, uh, Governor Pritzker is wanting to give and set more dollars aside to fund even more money to those Tier 1 and Tier 2 districts. So, hopefully, that $675,000 that we have in our budget, right, will become $800,000 to a million. And you have to remember, that becomes the new baseline, because we'll then get that every year thereafter. So, if we get a couple extra $100,000 this year, what that means is, I've already accounted for $200,000 in year 2021, '22, and '23. It's no longer 675, it's 475.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
But does that happen even if your enrollment starts to decline?
Uh, the great question. So, there is a hold harmless, but there, they have not defined how long the hold harmless will last.
All right.
Under the evidence-based formula.
Timeless.
Because you're, you're down in Springfield, I don't know. But again, you know, looking at 2021, even looking at 2022, um, I feel pretty, we've had to make some cuts this year, you know? Let that be known. We, we did cut our all-in needs of the district by $1.2 million, so that we can actually shift those dollars and afford $450,000 for positions we truly feel we need, right? For social, emotional learning and, and some other areas. So, you know, we did have to make cuts, but we didn't have to sacrifice a lot, primarily because we're keeping capital, capital spend the same as we are in FY '19. We wanted to increase that next year, but we were able to tone that back and still provide the board and the community a balanced budget moving forward.
I see, uh, your projected year-end balances, it kind of has a nice parabola, um, and it's all kind of within tolerances of each other, but it looks like we're, we've been increasing up to date, but now it looks like we're going to be dialing it back a little bit. Pardon? Oh, yeah. Does that, does that do to some of the capital projects that we're getting, or...
No, because the capital projects, um, are not reflected in here for 2020 or 2021 yet because of the timing of the expenses. Um, and a lot of those dollars will come out of the capital projects fund, which will not be, which will be non-operating.
Everything is purely operating funds?
Correct. I mean, you do have the 30 fund in here, you do have the 60 capital projects fund in here, but the aggregate that sums up to $108 million of total revenue are for operating, which is historically what we have always provided the board, especially at this level at draft one.
Okay. I just see at the, on the five-year, we're kind of going back to fiscal year 2014.
Right. So, the fine arts project is a perfect example. So, what we'll want to do, we'll want to have a discussion with the finance committee at a board meeting, um, do we want to fund that out of the capital projects fund? If we do, with fund balance from other funds, we will have a resolution to move dollars into our capital project fund and then fund that project out of capital project, which it should be, because it is really a non-operating capital expenditure.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you. It's a very detailed first draft, and, uh, I think it looks excellent.
Yeah. Feeling good. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, the action that we need to take is to approve the first draft. Is that the proper word I'm using here?
Yeah, first draft of the fiscal year 20.
Okay.
As well as if you want to approve the five-year plan, but it's generally just the budget that we need to approve.
Okay, very good. So, I will make a motion to approve the first draft of the fiscal year 20 budget and the five-year plan as presented in the materials.
Second.
Mr. Quagliano, any further discussion? We'll have a roll call.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Malendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes. Okay. Moving on. Next item is public comment. Do we have any more public comments?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we have one more. Same policy applies. And this is, okay, I'm definitely going to say this one. Ingrid, is it Malane? Okay. Welcome.
Welcome back.
My name is Ingrid Malane. I'm a former music educator in District 158. Uh, it's nice to be back here, and I want to thank you all for bringing back, after maybe 14 years, the fifth-grade band and orchestra. I'm very happy to hear that that's being offered again to our fifth-grade students next year, and also, I'm very happy to hear about the expansion and the reconstruction at the high school to expand the fine arts, and I hope you'll continue to expand the fine arts in our district. Even as I know that our numbers are going down, um, there's still room for even more. Steel band, maybe? Guitar? You know, computer-generated, um, composition? There's so much more that can be done, but thank you very much. I'm really happy.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much. Okay. Any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:57.
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.